Okay. This is Bernanke.
Welcome back, everyone. Could I have a motion to adjourn the executive meeting and reopen the public session? A motion from Kelly and a second from Tom, all in favor? And we rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Okay, our usual emergency evacuation. We see our exits, no smoking, no one's here but us. And we move to our approvals. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the minutes transcription from the meeting of the Huntington Union Free School District Board of Education dated October 26, 2020. I have a motion. From Xavier and a second from Michelle. All in favor? That's everybody. We have an FYI on the budget appropriation reports for general school lunch, special aid funds as of 10/31/2020, and budget transfer. I'll name them all, and then I'll ask if anyone has questions. The Finley Middle School change orders and the revenue status report from 10/31.
Just to clarify, the middle school change order, that is a, I'll call it a scribbler's error on the part of the contractor. It is a wash. The reduction in one area is the deduction in one area is the increase in the other, so it's not costing the district anything.
Oh, is it like the difference between trades or something?
The $10,000 was applied to the wrong component of the project, so it has to be corrected formally. That's what that's all about.
Anybody have any questions on any of those? Okay.
Also worthy of noting that both projects came in under budget.
Excellent.
Yes, thank you.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the September 2020 Treasurers Report. I have a motion. From Xavier and a second from Linda. All in favor? That is everyone. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the attached warrants which were certified for payment on October 28, 2020, and November 10, 2020. Have a motion? I have a motion from Tom and a second from Bill. All in favor? That's everyone. I have no idea if I'm on the camera or not because I can't see.
I'm sorry?
I can't see my own camera, so I have no idea if I'm actually pointed. Is the camera pointed at me?
You were on before.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure it was pointed at me. Okay, so that brings us to board member communications and announcements. Who has what to say?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. I want to thank the teachers, the principal, Mr. Polanski, for putting together very informative forums and workshops for the community. It was well received. Mr. Polanski spoke predominantly in Spanish, and everybody was very thankful of the information he provided.
Enjoyed it, thank you.
There were how many of us? I forgot. There were three.
We had two, one for the elementary folks and one for the secondary folks, and I'd like to thank Xavier and then a whole bunch of others for helping us get the word out. And honestly, it's nice to see how much they appreciate us reaching out to them, and it's just like any group of people in this community, when people go out of their way to give them a hand, they're appreciative, and I'm very thankful for that as well.
Sure, absolutely. I just wanted to mention that I heard from so many people at all different level, grade levels, that the conferences, the conference situation was a resounding success. And I heard from teachers, I heard from parents, that they really enjoyed the organization of it and the actual what.
I'm just, I'm sorry, Bill is on my screen.
What did you have on?
His mask was disturbing me.
I had my minions' mask on.
Halloween is over, dear. Even at my house, it's a little, so you know it's over. Anyway, anybody else?
Yeah, no, I just agree. The feedback has been incredible, and I want to thank the teachers for yet again doing something new, and it was new.
Want to give credit to who, I know you keep saying, every time I bring it up, you keep saying that it was.
You know, I'm not exactly sure who started that, but I know Mr. Cusack and Mrs. Rothel, and I believe Beth and others were involved in evaluating that platform, and I've mentioned before that there will be at the end of this, it's hard to see them now, but those silver linings are out there for the taking, and this is one of those things that we may be able to utilize moving forward, and that's not going to be the only such item, but right now, it's a struggle to see the silver linings, but mark my words, it will be there at some point.
Yeah. Anybody else? All right, then to you.
I have a couple of things. A lot of them are actually incorporated into the hustle item for discussion. Open Meetings Law is obviously the extension of the amendment allowing us to hold meetings remotely. That's probably going to continue once a month until this is becoming a thing of the past. I will speak to some of the recent announcements from the state regarding reopening and potential for things to occur on the local educational level. State aid is obviously something that we are watching very closely, and I know there are hordes of politics involved here, but right now, we have been receiving our full package of state aid monthly. Exactly how this plays out moving forward remains to be seen because that 20% cut is still on the table, and we also recently heard, and I shared this with the board, the transportation aid debacle, the months where we did not have buses transporting students, but instead negotiated something else with Huntington Coach and used them for ancillary purposes, the buses for ancillary purposes. Right now, as it currently stands, aid or reimbursement for those expenses is not available, and I know there are lobbying efforts to take care of that because we really had no choice but to do what we did as did other districts, so that's a potential problem as well. There have been some positive tidbits in terms of the mid-year budget update, but we're still looking at a fiscal nightmare in New York State, so right now, education is one of those things that is potentially on the table, on target for being hit, and I mentioned that 20% state aid cut has not been addressed. I think we're waiting to see what happens during the federal administration or following the federal administration transition. I did receive an update on the Consumer Price Index, the Urban Consumer Price Index, which is the start point for our tax levy limit calculation for '21-'22, and right now, we're looking with two months to go at about a 1.23 or so. So it does look like unless something drastic happens, we will be at a less than 2% tax cap or levy limit. I did not do this at the last meeting, and I hope Kathy is on. I'd like to thank her for helping us to secure, what we have to do as a district is we have to borrow because the timing of tax collections is not aligned with the school year, the fiscal year for the tax collections is different than our needs as a school district, so we actually have to borrow to cover costs until we collect taxes or until the town gives us the taxes they've collected for us. We don't collect our own taxes. We negotiated one of the lowest tan rates, tax anticipation note rates. The sale cost us next to nothing as compared to what we've paid in the past, and that reflects the district's financial rating as well as the fact that interest rates are in the tank right now, so it was next to nothing that we're paying for that borrowing, and we do have a sense of what TRS and ERS are going to look like next year. I shared with the board that the ERS costs, the employer contribution rate, is going to go up for '21-'22, and that the teacher retirement system rate, although they're predicting between nine and a half and 10, I expected that to be more, but I think actually the market has been doing reasonably well. Right now, the current year rate is of 9.53% of certificated salaries, so we're watching that very carefully. On an academic note or a state education department note, I think everybody is aware that January regents have been canceled, how that impacts our students, probably not much, but we are looking at that carefully, and no decision has been made at this point regarding three through eight assessments or the June regents exams, so we are again awaiting, we're going to wait to see what happens there. I think they're watching what happens with this pandemic, how it plays out, and right now, it's obviously not at a good point.
Can I ask you a question about it?
Yes.
We did have administration of the SAT though, right?
We did. We had about 100 students take the SAT. Was it last weekend or the weekend before? It was about 100 students. I'm going to say more than half were ours. We coordinated, and we mapped out the building very well, so our students were in one portion of the building socially distanced, and students from other districts were in the other portion of the building socially distanced. And it worked out, worked out very well. It's actually much, much fewer than the number that would typically be in there on a Saturday administration, and I'd like to commend the folks at the high school, Mr. Cusack and his team. The PSAT was administered without any obstacles in place whatsoever. They did a nice job in terms of the logistics, and let's hope the college board is able to do the right thing this time. A couple of other things, just to, I know we have, Xavier mentioned the parent forms. We are going to do that again for all. That worked out really nicely. It was also a student forum. Now, obviously, the pandemic is on everybody's mind, but there's been a lot of other social issues that have come up over the past several months, and we had a chance to have our students, a number of our students from the high school participate in a forum, run through a virtual forum, run through Western Suffolk OSs, and I believe, and I don't want to misspeak here, but I think I have this, I believe the two Huntington High School representatives were Teddy Carnesi and Jorge Sisneros. They represented us in the number of breakout groups discussing many of the issues that have faced our nation, our state, and our communities locally, and from what I hear, they did a terrific job, and the event was run really well. Yep. PTA Council is planning their Thanksgiving food drive and Project Toy Events, so we're going to continue to work toward putting our families in the best possible position as the holidays come about, and I will reinforce how important it is to heed the warnings about these holidays, take them, and understand them, and adhere to them, because I am convinced that a piece of the recent spike has to do with Halloween gatherings. Can't attribute it. I can only share an opinion, and it just seems to coincide. We have got to be careful here because there is a potential consequence educationally that we have no control over if the things are not done carefully, that we know need to be done carefully on the outside of our school district buildings. Just a couple of other things. Also mention that the, and I think this is in this week's board update actually, that the moratorium on the immunization stop, the immunization, what's the removal, the exclusion is what I'm looking for there, has been extended. The removal or withdrawal of that extension has been extended for another month, so those who are engaged remotely, they have until December 11th now to fulfill their statewide immunization requirements, and I didn't mention this at the last meeting. I'd like to thank Brian, who's sitting over there, and Kathy, they were instrumental in helping us double our bandwidth in this district. I don't think there is any district that is better prepared than we are to address technology in general, but Brian has done a terrific job, and I know we've been at the forefront of trying to stay ahead of what we need, and who knows what we're going to need over the next couple of months, so thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to our first public commentary. The usual rules apply. The first public commentary is mainly reserved for our items for discussion and action, which we have one of today. If time allows, after everyone has had their three minutes that wants to speak on that, then we can speak on other topics. You need to please identify yourself. Well, first, say that you want to speak by raising your electronic hand, and when called on, please identify yourself by name and your affiliation with the school district. Commentary is limited to those who are residents, employees, or students in the district, or families of students in the district, and please don't refer to personnel matters. I'm saying all this, and there's not a raised hand, right?
Yeah, what I will do is, at this point, if you'd like to offer something, please raise the electronic hand. I will unmute you. You'll make your comments, statements, questions, et cetera, and then I will mute you back up so we can either respond or follow up accordingly.
We can always unmute you if we need to.
Correct.
We see a raised hand.
Okay. You're listed as Nadal.
Sorry, it's, I don't know how to switch my name right now. It's Amy Plakta. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Trying to be a little cheeky. You know who my favorite tennis player is. I just have a question. Is there a percentage that we're looking for when schools are going to be going fully remote? I know the numbers keep on rising. Is there something that either Mr. Polanski, you're looking for itself, or are we just waiting for Cuomo, or what is, is there like a magic number, or is it really going to be at a subjective thought process?
No subjectivity here, Mrs. Plakta. What I'm going to do when we get to that first item for discussion is I'm going to lay it all out there for you, and then if you have questions after it, pop back on into the second public commentary, but that is my goal with the item for discussion that's listed as state, regional, and local COVID-19 updates.
Okay, thank you.
We'll do that first, and then we'll take it from there.
Okay, anybody else? Any famous soccer?
Excellent question, and that's on everybody's mind.
Yeah, absolutely. That's why it's on there for discussion, right?
You're not a Roger Federer fan, I see. Okay.
Okay, I don't see anybody else. There, I lost my place. Okay, then we go to items for discussion and action.
Okay, so as Mrs. Plakta just mentioned, I think it is, things have changed recently, and actually, as recently as over the weekend, so I'm going to try and in as understandable a manner as possible, and this is where I try to keep my communications to the community each week, just to try and keep it simple enough so people can understand, but also detailed enough so they know what's happening here. So a couple of things I'm going to go to this evening. In our reopening plan, and over the summer, the governor spoke about if the positivity rate, the rate of infection in various regions of the state were at or below 5%, schools would open. Obviously, when schools opened, they were well below 5%. We spent a good deal of time over the summer and early part of the school year, less than 1%. He also indicated that if a region positivity rate rose above 9%, that schools would close automatically. They have designed and developed a new strategy at the state level that is now taking over all over the state, and I do want to try and give you a sense of what this looks like and the communication that you're going to get tomorrow as community members. So Mrs. Plakta's question was very timely. This is a complicated memo that I'm about to open here, and I do not want to get into the fine details here, but I do want to try to answer her question by showing what I'm showing here right now.
Thank you.
They can't see this, but you can. It continues to get in my way. Okay. It's a Zoom thing. So right now, they've replaced that five and nine with this microcluster strategy. Now, I've been watching these numbers very carefully. If you're looking at the COVID dashboard by region, they only show you the current day's numbers, so if you're looking historically, you really don't know what's happened over the past couple of days. So I've been keeping my own database so that I can keep track, and I'm also using this in my conversations with the Department of Health and with my county executive, my county association executive board colleagues. So to answer Mrs. Plakta's question, what we're looking at now is a geographic area. I cannot define a geographic area. It is not the entire, doesn't appear to be the entire region. The region is Long Island, so when the governor first spoke about how things would progress, Long Island was one unit, Nassau and Suffolk Counties all together moving in the same direction. Now, they're doing things in a more localized manner, and that's a little bit harder to track, but they are looking at geographic areas that have higher-than-average positivity rates for an extended period of time. So what I'm doing is I'm following Suffolk County, I'm following Nassau County. If you've been following the numbers over the past couple of days, they have not looked, they have not looked good. Long Island in general has been over 3%, and Suffolk has been higher than Nassau, approaching 4% on certain days. So going back to her question, Mrs. Plakta's question, right now, if the area, whichever area is designated, this is coming from Albany, has a seven-day rolling average positivity rate, now that is the, you test 10,000 people, if there are X number of those people testing positive, that is your positivity rate. If that positivity rate exceeds 2.5% for 10 days, you enter a yellow zone. Above 3%, you enter an orange zone. Above 4%, you enter a red zone, and each one is treated differently. So I have been working with my colleagues in district to address what might happen if we enter a yellow zone. We would be required to do one of two things, to either close, or not close, but to shift to fully remote, or we would have to test 20% of our in-school population, that includes students and staff, and two things can happen there. If we test that 20%, and that positivity rate is below the rate for that geographic area, we would be allowed to remain open as we currently are. If we exceeded that rate, we could still remain open if we tested 20% every two weeks for the foreseeable future until we fall below that rate, or until we are no longer designated as a yellow zone hotspot. So the magic number there is 2.5% for 10 days, and then it's either we shift to remote, or we have to test the segment of our population. Now, the trick there, and we tried to get as ahead of this as we could, we have been in contact with potential testing partners. We could not test students without consent. It would not be something that we do as a district, but we would partner with an agency, a healthcare provider that would help us do this. We'd have to have consent, and we'd have to have at least 20% willing to do that, or we'd have to shift to fully remote.
Can I ask one question on that, or you want me to read?
Then let me just get through the, if we enter an orange zone, and 3% is that magic number, and I have to tell you, the recent numbers suggest that we may not be in a yellow zone for very long. We may jump right into orange. If that's the case, then everybody would need to consent to testing to re-enter, and then we'd still have to test 20%, I believe it's weekly, to make sure that our positivity rate is not exceeding that threshold. So we shift to full remote, or there is a massive testing program in place. And again, the question I have asked the county Department of Health on multiple occasions is what defines a geographic area, and they have not been able to answer that question either. So it looks like this is going to be something that's more local than the Long Island region in general, and I know we've all been trying to watch our community rates very carefully, but right now Suffolk County is not in a great place, neither is Nassau, just Suffolk happens to be a little bit higher. So that, that's the first part of an explanation addressing the question that was just asked.
So maybe you're going to go on to this about testing, or should I ask a question?
You can.
Okay, so my question is, I have a couple of questions. If people have got the 20%, is that just us actually sending people for tests, or if people are getting tests and reporting them, is that, could that be part of it?
It could go either way. If you were getting a test on your own and you shared that outcome, that test result with us, that would be acceptable, but there are people who would need to have that facilitated for them. I don't care what district you're in, so we are looking to partner with an agency or with a healthcare provider that would help us to facilitate people getting tested. There is a time limit here. It is, there is a pressing need for this, and obviously, if it hits a broad-scale region, my other concern is the availability of tests. What I am going to do tomorrow, and I indicated to the board that I would not be sending this letter out until we had this conversation tonight, is an explanation of exactly what I'm saying right here, and there will be a link to a survey that would give me a sense of whether parents, it is not a commitment by any stretch of the conversation here, but it would give me a sense of whether or not they would be willing to consent to testing, and it could be contingent upon, well, if it's this way or that way, but I'm just looking for a sense from parents and our community members whether or not they would even think about it, and it would give me a sense of whether it's not even, it's not even worth considering, because I'm pressing forward with this, but if I get a massive response that I'm not willing to have this done, then it might change my approach here, and I might not press as hard.
Two other questions I had about testing are, is there a certain kind of test that's required, and who bears the possible risks?
There is no, there is no specific test that's required. I believe what we're trying to do here is secure tests that would be provided by the New York State Department of Health to our local Department of Health that are free of cost and are least invasive. It's, I imagine it's a rapid test, and I'm not promising this is what we can secure, but if these tests are available, these specific tests do not, it's on the outskirts of the nostril. It is not a deep-probing PCR-type examination, or you don't have to go too deeply, and it would be a much more comfortable situation, certainly for young children. It remains to be seen what's available and how we can coordinate this through the county, and I have been in ongoing conversation with the Department of Health. They are willing to do this. It's just a matter of coordinating the logistics, and if this is widespread across both counties, I don't know how feasible it's going to be. Regardless, we may have to look at another relationship that we establish, and there might be a cost to that, and I can't promise it would not be something that would need to be addressed through people's insurance, but I'm trying to find the most cost-effective and accurate way to do this. Trying to keep our schools open, and I think that's what everybody wants.
Yeah.
So that's what this is all about, and it has been done in certain areas upstate where the zone designations have been issued already.
I mean, the geographic area could be a microcluster that he keeps talking about, right?
Those seem to be like towns or cities, so.
There was actually a district in Broome County where the zone covered four of its schools and not the other three. This is a school-by-school basis type thing. It's not the district, so each school that's in a designated zone, we'd have to test 20% in that school, so it's not, if I had an entire school in one area of this district test and zero in another, it doesn't count. You've got to, you've got to test 20% per school.
So theoretically, we could have a school that is above the threshold and not be able to be open, have to be remote, but we could have another school that is below the threshold.
That's correct. It's where they are geographically, and this particular district, I actually had called her because I wanted to find out how it was working, and she was very receptive to the phone calls, and I'm really sorry to bother you, but, because they were right in the throes of it, but they had four of seven schools on the list. On the hotspot list.
And you would send the survey out to district employees as well?
Yes, it would be two separate surveys. One would, I could put them on the same survey, but to remove the risk of checking in the wrong bubble, employee versus staff member versus student, I would send a separate surveys to both, one to families and one to staff members.
Jim, the 20% is per building?
20% per building, yes, and that includes staff and students.
Okay.
As one entity, yes.
Has the county shared with you the accuracy of those rapid tests? We had one recently.
They're as rapid as they can be. I, you know, they're.
No, I think should be the accuracy, just talking about.
Accuracy of the route, right, because we had one done recently, and we were told 80%, whereas the PCR was much higher.
It depends on who you ask. They are acceptable in this situation. I've heard closer to 90%. I am not a medical professional.
Right.
My understanding is that when they show positive, they're positive. When they show negative, they can still be positive on a certain percentage of cases. There have been situations where the PCRs have been not 100% accurate as well. They are predominantly accurate, and listen, we're relying on both. We have gotten scripts back from doctors that indicate the rapid came back negative, but we are advising the child to stay home until the PCR comes in. We're following the doctor's orders, and we've been very straightforward with this, and we have not compromised what we've set in motion here. You know, our problems on occasion have been people not filling out the form correctly and not checking no to all answers, and there was somebody with a symptom at home, and that, those are the things that maybe nine times out of 10 are not going to impact anyone. That 10th time could shut down a building, and I'm trying to make that as clear as possible in every communication I put out there, because it's happened multiple times already.
Jim, regarding the 20% number, is it 20% of the total student population or 20% of the population anticipated to be in the building at one time?
20%, that's a good question. 20% of the in-person population, so that would not include the fully virtual students. They would not be required to participate in this. If they were fully virtual, it includes all of the in-person students and staff members. That's your denominator.
Jim, if we just barely reached the 20% threshold of those who are willing to consent to the tests, will those same people be tested week after week?
It depends. If the positive test rate is below. It depends. If the positive test rate is below the positivity rate for the geographic area, the testing would end right there and we'd be able to remain open. If it was above, then we'd have to test 20% each week. I think in the yellow zone area, and this is something I will clarify, there is not a requirement that there be a different group tested every two weeks. Once you hit that orange and red zone, I know that over a four-week period, you'd have to, you'd have to test the entire population of in-person folks, students and staff. This is not easy.
I think Kelly was asking what would happen if you had maybe 30% consent rate. Would there be repetitive testing to get to that 20%? Because we only had 30% consent.
Yeah, I, I think we do that only if it were a yellow zone situation. It's something I will definitely check out before we do that. And there will be further clarification. But I don't think it has to be a different sample. For the yellow zone, again, it's every two weeks. That just changed this weekend. Because before this weekend, it was weekly testing, 20% random. You'd have to test 100% over a five-week period if you remained in that yellow zone hotspot designation.
So who, who informs us of what zone we might be in if we're falling into a zone in the state?
That is a terrific question. I, I honestly think it will just appear every day, and Mrs. Miranda is very familiar with this. I feed her numbers and she completes a report for every one of our school buildings with positive and negative tests that have come in. I believe she will open that portal on, on a given day, see that we are in that portal designated as a hotspot area. And, and that's why I am tracking these numbers myself and putting them into my own very simple spreadsheet. So I have a sense at least of what's going on in Suffolk County. And I believe today we are on, my letter last week said two days. Now we're up to day six in terms of yellow zone consideration. And I think we're up to day four in terms of orange zone consideration. So that's the difference between two and a half and 3%.
This is the portal to the department of health?
This is the portal through which we, we feed them the information that appears in that COVID report card per district. So every day we are putting in the number, not that the names, but the number of negative tests that come back. So the principals, I have to say, we have a process here that has been very straightforward and very successful each day. I get communications from each building principal with negative test results. Those get plugged in, and any positives are going in there as well. You know, somebody actually asked me, well, why do we need to know about every positive case in the district? And the answer is, I don't want people to see in our report card that, for example, Southdown was an example today. The child had not been in for over, well over two weeks and does not impact anything, but it's gonna go in the report card. And I don't want a parent to look in the, at the report card, which is a public document, see that number there and say, well, where did that come from? When? How? So everything that comes in is going to be shared by me, because I think people need to know and not be surprised by seeing this in, in a public document. Okay, that quieted the room. So much like anything else, to get out of a zone, I think you have to be, and I'll, I'll scroll down to that as well. My glasses keep sliding off the mask. We are a tier one area, by the way, because of our population. So if you look at this chart in its entirety, and this is actually something that, this is a public document as well. But if you're a less popu-, less populous area, your percentages are a little different. So if, if you happen to be a tier two area, one of the upstate counties, your seven-day rate is 3%, not 2.5%. But we are downstate and we are populous down here. And this is, this has since changed. So as I mentioned, this is an old table here where it says open, schools can open if mandatory 20% weekly. That just changed over the weekend to 20% bi-weekly. And if things are lower in your school district than they are in the surrounding region, that would be the only time you'd have to test. And then there are the metrics to leave the zone. So we, it's, it takes 10 days at 2.5% or greater to get into the zone. It takes 10 days at 1.5% or less to get out of the zone. And again, the big question mark, and we've all been discussing this as superintendents, what does a geographic area look like? We don't have the specific positivity rates. I know there are some east end communities that have gotten hit very hard recently. It, this could pop up anywhere, and my goal right now is, is to keep people informed and be prepared for any scenario that comes our way. Hence this communication tomorrow. And the survey that will go out just asking about willingness to participate in the testing. So let me close this up. And this actually, I can open this as well. This is what came in November 14th, which is Saturday. And right this, this area right here, that changed what I just showed you in that colored table. At this point, if we're talking about a situation where must test 20% over the two-week period immediately, immediately following the designation. And again, if your rate is lower than the rate in the surrounding area, you wouldn't have to test any further.
Does that mean if we end up being in a yellow designation, we have two weeks to test?
We have two weeks to complete testing of the 20%. And I'd have the document line by line, who was tested and those, those results. So this is a fairly labor-intensive process. And, and poor Diana. Diana Rich has been at the other end of my phone calls on a, I'm gonna say a bi-hourly basis. Where are we with, with Go Health? Where are we with the county health department? Just, she's been helping to reach out and try and find potential partners here. This really should be driven by the Suffolk County Department of Health. If you look at the top of this memo here, and all of these are actually, I gave you the whole history in this week's update. But the October 9th memo actually spoke to the New York State providing the, the rapid test kits, the least invasive rapid test kits, and the fact that they would be provided free to the local health department, healthcare providers, pharmacies, et cetera. It's just a matter of drawing in a partner to help us administer those tests. It is very difficult for a school to become a limited service laboratory based on staffing limitations and, and just all the things that our nurses have been working pretty much around the clock to get what they need to get done, done. So to put that, that burden on them would be not, would just be not, not feasible, not realistic.
Jim, I have a question. If, if we reach as a region the yellow zone and we do the one-time testing and we're under the threshold, at what point would they, would we have to test again?
We wouldn't unless the yellow zone were taken away and then another yellow zone were re-designated. So as long as that one yellow zone is in place, my understanding is once we test and test below that, that threshold, then we are, we are clear, because that would be demonstrating that our school district is not a, isn't, is not a spreader within that community. What they're trying to establish is just that. If you show me that your rate is less than the rate that caused the yellow zone designation in the surrounding area, if you show me a rate below that, then you are telling us as a state that you are not contributing to the community spread. It does, it actually does make sense. The logistics don't.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And if we move from yellow to orange, does that reset?
If we move from yellow to orange, the rules change. Then it becomes, everybody's got to consent to testing, and we would have to test 25% weekly. And there's no threshold there through, where, where's testing stops. But you've got to, you know, honestly, once you start testing in a yellow zone, you may end up with more positives. You could bump into an orange zone. I don't necessarily think that's going to happen, but it could. No matter how you slice it, this is not simple.
Hey Jim. Just, just run me through a scenario of how, how this would roll out. So, so we go find out all of a sudden, I guess, one of our buildings is in a yellow zone and potentially other buildings are not. Or maybe two of three, or whatever it might be. We find that out. We now have to enact testing on 20% of the staff and students in that building.
Correct.
Do, does remote learning instantly kick in? We don't, don't have full-time classes at that point. What happens between those tests happening and the students actually being in the building or not in the building?
I believe you have two weeks to complete that 20% testing. So you, you are, you're open until, and, and I don't want to misspeak here. This is something I would confirm. But I believe you stay open until that two-week period is complete. If you cannot complete that, that testing regimen, and it, they, they could tell me differently. They could say you have to close until you complete that, that testing regimen. It's not clear here. But regardless, we have to complete that 20% testing within a two-week time period.
Okay. And so that happens, you, you fall underneath the, the, the threshold, you're good to stay open. You fall, you're, you're too far above it, you have to then close, correct?
Right. If you, if you look back at the previous document that I shared, and I'll go back to it, I don't believe this changed. Okay. And, and again, this one, this, this document I'm showing you is just as of Saturday night. But going back to this document and the table I showed you initially, or actually the second table I showed you, here, right in this area, in the yellow zone, schools remain open, but a mandatory 20% weekly testing of students and staff that are in the in-person setting. So it does not speak to closing first, testing over that two-week period and then reopening. I think they're giving you that two-week period to, to get that testing done. But I will absolutely need to confirm that, so I'm not going to, to swear to it.
Okay.
Okay.
The update changed what happens orange, not automatically remote, right?
Right. So if you look at, there, there's another memo that I've, not to, not to overburden, but there is another memo, actually, I can probably call it up and show it very quickly here. Actually, it's in the update. It's not here. So it does describe, in an orange or red zone, you do have to close. But you can test your way back open.
Okay.
In a yellow zone, you stay open and you can test to stay open. Or in an orange or red zone, you, you're closed automatically, and you have to test yourselves back open.
And the 20%, I didn't see anywhere in there what percentage of the 20% can be staff.
Doesn't say.
Doesn't say, right?
Doesn't say. I think they're leaving it open for a reason. Listen, that, you know, 20% to them is anybody who's in the building. And if you can show us that you're, and my hope is we'd be able to do that. It's just a matter of, of, I'm more concerned about the logistical. Said, I, I think we got ahead of this, but that doesn't mean anything if the tests aren't available. So I have been, I, I have been on the horn for a couple of weeks now, just trying to, to, to work with. And I've been working with colleagues to see if we can, we can work through a couple of districts together and then realize economies of scale, because they are saying they have the tests. It's just, we haven't been designated down here yet, so nothing's, nothing's been delivered. So we are trying to find ways to keep our kids in school, which is obviously, I think, the, the most important thing on everybody's mind, and safely.
What percentage are you looking for from the surveys to say that you're gonna go after the, the testing kits?
Definitely more than 20%.
I get that, but then you're gonna have repetitive testing like Kelly.
I, you know, I'm hoping for more than a 50% response rate, and I'm hoping that, that, that people are going. And listen, like, like I said, the details of tomorrow's letter don't get into how the testing is performed. But if you didn't want the test performed by something that was provided to us, you could go to your local city MD and, and get a test done and contribute to it that way. So it's not just, you know, we don't have to do this. It can be the result that you give us, but it has to happen after the designation. So if you were tested today, it doesn't count. Until we're designated, it has to be, and I think it's outlined in there. It has to be within seven days of the initial designation, and I think after. So, because you could test today negative, but by the time we're designated, it doesn't take long for this thing to, to incubate, and the infection can appear very quickly.
Would, would parents be able to consent on a conditional basis, depending on the invasiveness of the test?
Yeah, and I, I'm not, I'm not asking for, because they, they could technically go get a rapid test on their own if they'd like. I'm not, I, I'm not locking tomorrow's survey into any specific type of test, and I don't, I did not put in the survey, maybe, that's not really, my, my major concern is would you, if, if the right tests were available, or if you, would you be willing to go out and, and get this test in order to contribute to that 20%? So I'm, I'm kind of keeping it generic. I don't know what's gonna be available to us. I do believe that we'll have the option of those rapid tests that are, that are less invasive. But I know that some of the phone calls that have been made recently, the folks that, that, that these healthcare agencies that have offered to help have only been able to provide PR tests. And I know as a parent that may be less attractive to you. This is just in general, would you be willing to consent? And I don't want to get into the type of test, because there are options there that, that you have. You, you can go out on your own and do this.
In terms of payment for the tests, are they frequently? I mean, I paid a copay to my doctor, so would that be a potential barrier for people who would otherwise consent but don't want to pay for it?
Again, the tests are supposed to be, at least from, from what we've understood, the state will provide the tests, it's who administers them. And, you know, we, we've spoken to a couple of potential partners who said it would be a, a small exam involved, and it would be covered by insurance. And if people didn't have insurance, they would be willing to work with them.
Okay, but if they, if they wanted to go out to get their own tests, then they would potentially have to pay for it?
Or go to a place where they offer free tests.
Yeah, okay.
Which, which are out there as well. So that would be perfectly sufficient. So this is, you know, some people may not want to test under any circumstance, which, you know, obviously is a different situation. But if you wanted to go to Walgreens and, and take advantage of one of the free tests they offer, the result there would be acceptable to us.
Families will answer the survey one per student, I mean, for each student.
Yep. I, I, I was very tempted to get it out early, but I did not want to do this without having this conversation this evening. So it's a very simple survey. It is student name, building, didn't even ask for grade level because it's irrelevant. It doesn't matter what, it doesn't have to be by grade level, it just has to be by building. And would you be willing to, based on the letter, would you be willing to consider a COVID test under the circumstance?
We're sending to UPK families?
Yes. Absolutely. They're in the building. They have to be, they're part of the 20%. And my hope is we should be able to reach that 20%. It's just how we can, that's less of my concern than the logistics of, of getting this set up.
Hey Jim, just so people understand how this survey might also be used. These numbers are going up pretty quickly. So we might only be yellow for like three or four days, and then go right to orange.
We may jump right through.
In which case, we would be forced to go remote. But that survey response would still be applicable to us trying to get ourselves tested back open, correct?
Correct. So the, the, the letter does not specify, I am asking in case we enter a yellow zone. It actually outlines yellow zone, orange zone, red zone. Either way, there would be testing involved. Are you willing to participate?
So people need to understand, if we go orange, we have to go full remote until we test ourselves back open.
That's correct.
Correct.
Absolutely. And that's a good reminder and a good point. So there are different requirements. This, this document is posted to board docs, to board docs in public. Just keep in mind that actually, I did, I did put the 1115 micro cluster guidance memo up here as well. So it's this document here, is that highlighting on my shared screen, I hope? The metrics updated by this memo here, both of those things together. If you're interested in really reviewing this, a couple of people asked me about this before this meeting, and I sent them the links to these things. It was actually before the weekend memo came out, so you can take a look for yourself, because people have in mind, we talked about 5 and 9%. Even the governor, when he was talking about keeping the city schools open in his press conference on Friday, cited 5% to 9%. And I, I believe I screamed out of my office. Joanne definitely did, like, what is he talking about? He's, he's invented an entire, entirely new strategy, and he's citing 5 and 9% again. I'm trying to stay on top of this, and he's confusing me on a routine basis. But now, the, the micro cluster strategy is relatively new, and as you can see, based on the memo that we, we received this weekend, it's still morphing. And I think they were trying to, they're understanding that schools have not served as super spreaders. And, and what's happening is, things are happening on outside of the, on, on the outside of school buildings, and they're coming in. But even the research shows that our little guys in particular are, are not really spreading this thing. And we are finding that even the, the few that have gotten it, they're completely asymptomatic. Very few of them are showing any symptoms, and I can only speak to the few cases that we've had here, which is, which is problematic in its own right. But they are not looking at, at elementary schools in particular as sources of major spread. And that's not just here, that, that's across the country.
Jim, just a quick clarification with the, and you may have mentioned this and I missed it, but would the testing, if the child consents, be administered in school?
I'm trying to set something up that would be convenient for those who may not be able to get to another location. So it is possible. I, I can't confirm it yet, because we haven't, we haven't, we haven't gotten to that point. I don't think any school has this in place down here. I'd like us to be the first. Can't promise that'll be the case, but I'm pushing hard enough that maybe we will be. And I would like to offer something that is convenient for parents, and it may, may in fact be the school. The problem is, and I'm just gonna be open about this, if we do open something up in the school based on the way this is laid out, it would also have to be open to the general public. And while we'd be testing students who have no symptoms and are believed not to have this, it would also need, need to be open to those who may believe that they're infected and can come in and take advantage. it would also need to need to be open to those who may believe that they're infected and can come in and take advantage of that testing as well, and I have a little bit of a concern with that.
Why would it have to be open to the general public?
Because that's, that's what the state requires.
Any testing site has to be open to the general public?
If we open it in the school with these tests, with these test kits that the state provides, we can go in a different direction, but they won't necessarily be free test kits. So that that is also weighing heavily on my mind, and I can tell you without any hesitation that there are some school districts that are already saying, no, not us, we're just gonna close, because this is not easy.
Do we have the space anywhere to separate, have a separate quarantine room?
That, I don't want to get into the weeds there, because I I don't think this is gonna be set up in a school gym or anything like that, because school is still going to be in session, so we're we're gonna have to work through those details. It's a lot, I know.
Thank you so much. I don't even know how you keep it in here.
Will you be adding M.D. to the end of your name after this is over?
Half the people call you.
Honestly, I I cannot.
You've called a few things.
While while I know that I have been, I'm trying not to sound like a broken record, please fill out your forms on a daily basis. The vast majority of this community has been terrific, the kids themselves have been terrific, the teachers, the staff have been terrific. Everybody is is trying to do their part in keeping us in in one piece here, and this is not easy for anyone. Everybody is struggling through this, and this is just one more added piece that we all can't wait for this to be over, and and, you know, unfortunately, now we're experiencing the predicted second wave. And it's, there's no, there's, there's no easy solution here. So we're we're gonna, we're gonna continue trying to do what we can to keep our kids in 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 good working order, our families in good working order, and our staff, and as as good a set of spirits as possible, this is, this is, this is thankless for everybody. The last piece that I have attached here, and I don't need to open it up, but I I will tell you that the Suffolk County Department of Health has also changed its its practice in terms of how we address contact tracing within districts. Up until, up until this weekend, and I think the first case that we had here was the recent case at Finley Middle School. What I would do is I would collect a complete vast array of information, I'm using my hands, if people can see me, for the, that's right on the screen, for the health department in terms of room square footage, and how many children were in a room, and whether the windows were open, and and what the MERV filter rating was on the air purifier, and were the children wearing masks, and how long were their mask breaks? It would take us basically a full day to compile this information. Then I would send them with the help of the, actually, the building principal, I shouldn't say to help, they would put together their contact list, which is close and proximate contacts. The department would review the information, the data, and the contact list in terms of how long those children were in the in the room with the positive case. Because of our setup here, they did not quarantine, they they would, we'd give them that contact list, they'd call me back within a few hours after their committee met, and then basically indicate to me that nobody has to quarantine, that happened a couple of times. That process is no longer in place. At this point, we have to identify close contacts, we send them, there's no more information collecting, I send that contact list to the Department of Health, they confirm quarantine on their end, they are still the authority that quarantines, we can only do so preliminarily. But right now, the contact list that we send from the district is going to look a lot more like the quarantine list in general, because they're not going through the full-scale information. It is not a comfortable place for districts to be, and and the right call is the conservative call, so if a child is in a class all day with another child who has tested positive, those children will 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 likely need to quarantine, and that quarantine, again, will be issued by the Department of Health, and the Department of Health will still continue issuing the releases from quarantine, they will check in with families, and I know they're not moving that quickly right now because of the the volume, but at the end of the quarantine period, they will, they will provide a release to the family, and that release would have to be given to the school before the child, or staff member for that matter, is is allowed back in. So again, it is, this is not easy.
For anyone, but especially, especially.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Will I get my place back here? Well, on that note, we go to Ms. McQuar.
Be note.
Yeah. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approves CSE, CPSC submissions as delineated. Have a motion. Linda, and a second from Xavier, questions, comments, theories, all in favor? That's everybody. And back to you.
Okay, I am asking the board for approval of personnel items on schedules, and I don't have my glasses on. Thirty-five, eight, ten, eleven, thirteen, sixteen, and twenty-two.
Okay, have a motion? Michelle, and a second from Bill. Any question? All in favor? That's everybody.
Thank you.
Doing it remotely, or?
Kathy, do this remotely?
What just happened?
Oh, okay. I have to find her.
She raises her hand, and then she comes to the top.
Kathy, raise your hand.
Oh, there she is.
Kathy? Last chance. There we go.
Third time's a charm. So it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education approve items I through O on this evening's business agenda. Okay, have a motion. Michelle, and a second, Kelly, questions, all in favor? That is everybody.
Thank you, Kathy, I'm sorry, I should have had you unmuted all along.
Under K Business, we have donations, two very generous donations by the same person, Mr. Barry Dutchen is presenting a donation of the items listed in in that list, it's a list of donation items for the robotics club. It has an approximate value of 7,524. As a second donation, Mr. Barry Dutchen is presenting a donation of the items listed below to the Huntington School District Science Department. That donation has an approximate value of $3,159. Thank you very much.
Great, Janice, thank you.
Okay. That brings us to our second public commentary. Please raise. If, if you're not asking another question, you can put your hand down, or you could raise your hand again.
Okay, Mrs. Smalling, I'm trying to unmute you now.
See that?
Okay. Mrs. Smalling, you're up.
Hi, I'm Stacy Smalling, I have two kids in the district, one at the high school, one at Finley. I just wanted to go back over the COVID thing. I know you have to watch the numbers, but in the instance that we do go on the rise, would there be an immediate, like, school closure, or, you know, do you have an idea of, I know it's hard to tell, because it goes up so frequently, but a lot of times, you know, people that do work or that do have smaller children, I'm one of the lucky ones that my kids are older, so if that does happen, I mean, is there an anticipation, you know, of it closing? My kids came home today and said that they heard, I mean, I know it's just hearsay, that that we were gonna be closed next week, you know, even before, right before Thanksgiving, so I just, you know, I know it's hard to tell or anticipate, but if it was getting close, would you, would you alert us and say, you know, listen, it's looking not good, or, you know what I mean, I know, again, it's hard to tell, but to be spontaneous and just say, schools, boom, closed, that's a little hard. And the other thing is, as far as the testing goes, would that require, you said it's per per building, what if you have, you know, many children in the district, so it would have to be family-wide, and you require families to be tested also?
Okay, I'll address the first question first. What I'm doing right now is providing fair warning, and I will not make a decision to close these schools. I I, and the Board of Education, and I've had this conversation, actually, they will not make a decision to close these schools. This will be something dictated by the positivity rates in these geographic regions that I described before. So if a, if a school district closes or goes into one of those yellow zone, orange zone, red zone modes, that's going to be dictated by by the State Department of Health, and not by a school district, at least not this school district. So I have been attempting to throw out there that our rates have been going up as a region. We are in day six of what would qualify us for a yellow zone, and day four of what would qualify us as an orange zone. And my, my best guess is, not knowing exactly what these geographic areas look like and how the numbers break down specifically within them, is that within three or four days, we could be designated as a zone and have to either enter the full-fledged testing mode or shift to full remote altogether. And like I said, that is not a school district decision per se, that is going to, that is going to be thrust upon us from this micro cluster strategy established by the state. As far as the families go in testing, every school building is different, so you could choose to test one child and not another. I would be looking for the consent to test X percent at at every building, and not, it has nothing to do with family per se, it's X percent within a building. If you have two children in in the same building, that would contribute two to that 20%. If you have two children in separate buildings, it would contribute that one to the 20% for each of those buildings. The denominator for each building is different, the 20% is separate for Woodhull than it is for Jack Abrams, separate for Southdown than it is for Flower Hill.
It would contribute two if you consented for both.
Correct. Okay.
Let me just ask Mrs. Plauch, to raise your real hand if you have another question.
She did raise her hand again, so I'm gonna open her. All right, Mrs. Plauch, to then Mrs. Van Horn, where shall I send the doll?
Can unmute, okay.
There you go.
Okay, Mrs. Plauch.
I just have a question about the 20%. I'm I'm trying to figure this out, I guess I have three questions. Should the, should the 20% be a randomization of testing? Because if the same 20% of people are testing negative, it kind of defeats the purpose of testing. And also, I'm wondering, should almost like the, we need to get a majority of people to be 100% in the consent region, because if we do tap into different clusters, we're gonna need more and more people to consent. So should we get those consents upfront, because we could change biweekly what zone we're in in a way? And then also, could we have some link on the website that shows like if your school is in which cluster, instead of us having to go to the state website to find out if that school is in what zone cluster?
Okay, so once that happens, I will definitely publicize it on the website. Right now, there is no school down here, or school district, or area, community slash region that is designated down here, so I I I won't know until it happens. I can tell you that just based on the the numbers that I have been watching daily, and like I said, I started tracking myself, because you can only get from the state website the current day's numbers. So what I see is where, where, like I said, day six, day four, a couple of days, the governor could come down and say, this is a designated area, this is a designated community, this is a designated region. So I am preparing for worst-case scenario. As far as, I I can't push people to test, I can only attempt to reach out, that's what the survey is going to be for tomorrow, to get a sense of of, it is laid out, what a yellow zone requires, what an orange and red zone require, that these are mechanisms through which we can keep our 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 schools potentially open. I I have to rely on people to do what they feel comfortable with, I can't put pressure on them, but I can lay out the facts, and that that's exactly what tomorrow's communication is is going to do. Did I miss a part of the question?
Hey Jim?
Yeah.
One thing that was mentioned here that I I think we would probably find highly unlikely, you you had mentioned there was an upstate district that had just some of their schools in an area. However, those school districts are geographically much larger than us. Given the proximity of our schools in a very small geographic area, I would expect it highly unlikely that our school district get treated differently, building by the building.
I I happen to agree, unless they are looking at at zip codes specifically, which I'm not gonna put put out of, out of the question here, because we are, we we are definitely a district that is split by two zip codes. There is an, I was speaking to one of my colleagues on the East End this morning, who I know they've had many, many cases recently, it's all one zip code, so I think, but they're, they're, they were talking about that Brooklyn cluster, when it leaned into the southern, southwestern tip of Nassau County, that they were blocks split in half. So exactly how this is gonna work, I don't know, but Bill's point is is valid, that up in Broom County, schools may be, the school districts cover a much broader area, and the likelihood of there being some schools in and in some schools not is much higher than down here. Down here would likely hit multiple districts in the same township at the same time. So it's not just one district, it would probably be multiple districts. I just, I I can't give you any more specific information about who is potentially going to be identified here. I can only tell you, it looks like any district in Nassau and Suffolk, particularly in Suffolk. Now, we also lean toward the northwestern corner of Suffolk and closer to Nassau than some of our East End Suffolk colleagues, but Suffolk County's rates have been approaching four, they haven't hit four, but there's been 3.7, 3.8, 3.6 for at least three of the past six days. So we are not in a good place as a county right now, and the numbers, yesterday, the numbers went down a little bit, and I thought maybe the post-Halloween impact was potentially behind us, and they jumped back up again today. So I'm just not hopeful that we're gonna be able to avoid something here, and I'm just being realistic. And I think, you know, the the best, the best tool we have right now is communication, just having people be aware of of what what the prospects are and what the potentials are. All right, I'm going to go over to Mrs. Van Horn.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for really everything, this is so tremendous, there's so many logistics involved, so I appreciate all the detail. I had a question regarding the micro clusters. Is it available to the public, like, if we wanted to look and see if, what micro cluster we were in, and what our rates were daily? Like, is that a public, something we could look at, and how do we know which micro cluster our specific house falls into?
I I don't think there is any designated micro cluster. I I think it's based on what's happening with positivity rates in a specific area. So a micro cluster today, a yellow zone today could look much different than a yellow zone three or four weeks from now. So there is no set area that's gonna be covered at the same time now, as as compared to several weeks from now. The the fact is, the school districts that have been identified have found out they were identified when they were identified. And the place where that seems to be happening is in the COVID portal, where we submit our testing data on on a daily basis. So I I don't know if we're going to get much warning here, but what I can do, and this is what I have been doing, and it's led to this conversation tonight, has has, I've been tracking the data in the region just to see what the potential for this to happen might be. And and like I said, Suffolk numbers do not look good, they have been over 2.5% for six days. And if that 10%, if that 10-day threshold applies to this area, that's when that designation would come down, four days from now. If the numbers above three continue, we could be designated, Bill pointed this out before, we could be designated as orange immediately, or several days shortly thereafter, or the Albany can designate a smaller area that doesn't include us, but if these rates keep going up around here as they have, I can't imagine that there's going to be very many districts that that escape this. So I, there, there is no specific, I I get emails that in fact show me, from the Department of Health, that show me what the most recently designated yellow zone, orange zone, et cetera, what those areas are, but I'm not seeing that until after it happens.
Okay, thank.
Welcome.
The definition of the word that they use allows them to draw, however, to draw the lines of a micro cluster, however you like.
I mean, I I can show you one of the emails that I received today. I mean, I can show you one of the emails that I received today. I mean, it would be interesting for the community to see as well. It wasn't today, it was yesterday. But it showed, actually, what I'll do, because it's worth showing. I'm gonna stop sharing for a minute. Bear with me for a second.
Now we get to see all your email.
Okay, let's go to.
It's just how organized my email is, everybody.
I'm sure.
Not.
Okay, this is it. Let me reshare my screen. This thing continues to get in my way. No, that's not it.
It's the tab up top.
Okay, so Mrs. Van Horn asked about a website, forward.ny.gov. This is where you can get additional information. Yes, it was up top, thank you, Linda. The COVID microcluster strategy. This will tell you, you can find COVID-19 hotspot zones by address, but they're not going to show this to you until you've been identified. So here is, you can see the outlines of these various clusters. Brooklyn, Broom County, Schumung County, Erie County, Monroe County, Anadaga, Orange, Queens, Staten Island, Rockland, Tioga, Westchester. There's no set shape here. You know, but obviously, if we check an address here. I'm putting the address of the, you know, there's a random address came up. And what's going to happen is is not currently in a cluster hotspot zone. I don't know why that just came up like that. But the bottom line is, until it's identified, it's not going to show you anything that's going to help very much. This site can be used to identify to here, to identify regions that have been identified previously. So there is nothing down here on Long Island. Again, I am watching rates and trying to do my own predicting based on what I'm seeing in terms of the COVID dashboard in Long Island, Nassau and Suffolk separately. So here, look at Staten Island, updated November 11th. Over the past 10 days, parts of Staten Island have had seven-day average positivity rates above 2.5%. And this is the other piece, and I didn't even mention this. It was in that microcluster document. The other metric is cases per 1,000, oh, not 1,000, 100,000. Over 10 new cases per 100,000 residents in the area or those who live in that community. And I can tell you, if you look at the Newsday data table, that's per 1,000. So if you look at Huntington Station, for example, and it's not even very high, it's been at .19.2. Huntington has been at .2, .21, .22. Multiply that by 100, that's going to give you your cases per 100,000. There's very few communities on Long Island right now that are below that 10 per 100,000 threshold. So that's, to me, that's more of a no-brainer. It's that 2.5% rate that I've been watching very carefully. So, but if you're interested, this website, forward.nyork.gov, is addressing all of the clusters that have been identified across the state.
Okay. If this happened and we went remote, we would be looking at a synchronous learning model or?
We would be looking at the schedule, that the remote learning schedule that is built into our reopening plan.
Hey, Jim?
Yep.
I don't know if you're aware of, there is an app from New York State called the COVID Alert New York app that does give you the percent tested positivity over the past seven-day, seven-day average total tested as well as total people tested. So it gives you a little.
Where the county?
I have the app. That's also the app where you can see people around you who are.
Correct.
Okay. I have not followed through in setting myself up with that app because they have questioned the accuracy of it, but I don't know that 100%.
Well, I'm just saying, from a guideline perspective, you could put Suffolk County in, and it's going to show you what the positivity rate is and gives you a little graph of the seven-day average for anybody.
Right. For Long Island.
It's just Suffolk County alone. You can get it.
The site that Kelly is looking at right now is the one that I go to on a daily basis. That is the COVID dashboard. Same information that they're pulling from.
So Jim, you said that you keep track on a daily basis of what it is beyond the rolling average.
Paul, I do see you, I'm gonna get to you in one second.
So you said before that you keep track, you have your own record on a daily basis of the rates that you look at beyond just the seven to 14-day rolling average? Why, is that just for your own knowledge? So you know which way we're trending without having to look at the?
Correct, because I have nothing else to go by other than what you're looking at there and what Tom was just suggesting. So I am following the rates in Nassau and Suffolk and across Long Island, which are probably indicative of what's going to happen here because we are so densely populated. Like I said, the metrics here are different than the metrics upstate. And Bill pointed this out before because they are not as densely populated. So my feeling is the regional metrics are going to impact the local community. The impact is going to be pretty much the same across. They may look at it by township, but I think we're all going to be impacted by this in some way, shape, or form. So, and again, the shortcoming of that site you're looking at, Kelly, is that when tomorrow's data is entered, today's data will not be found. So I am just pulling that data and sticking it into just a very simple spreadsheet. So I have it from day to day. And I started when we first hit that 2.5% threshold. So, all right.
Before you unmute the next person, I just want to remind him to, or her, to identify themselves because it's only a first name.
Okay, Paul, I'm unmuting you. I'll try again. There you go.
Hello.
Hi. Hi, I'm Amy Sherwood. And I have students in the first grade and sixth grade, Jefferson and Jack Abrams. My question was, considering the inherent deficiencies that are currently exist with the remote learning, first grade in particular, are there any improvements or revisions that are currently being made and implemented? With the online learning?
I'm not sure what the entire, so you, are your children fully virtual?
Are you asking if?
No, no, they go.
We're doing hybrid.
We're doing hybrid. Just wondering if any improvements are.
They seem to be having a lot of trouble with hybrid, with the remote system. And are there any improvements that you're planning to make the interaction with the teacher better?
Okay, so.
Kind of lost throughout the day. And without someone there holding their hand all along, the work is virtually impossible to get done.
Okay, so if your children are in first and sixth grade and you're participating in the hybrid model, they, well, not the sixth grader quite yet, but the first grader should be back in school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So if we are, if the possibility obviously exists, are fully remote again, hopefully not. But if that happens, are they making any revisions or improvements to the online learning?
The schedule is going to change. And I think that in some respects, if all students are remote, it is going to change the nature of the instructional and learning process. One of the things that we are looking at, and this is barring any changes in this situation with schools based on these microcluster zones and identifications at the state level, is potentially looking at certain grade levels. If we can do this, to move into a fully virtual direction so that the kids who are all at home can learn from a teacher and they're all on the same platform. And you wouldn't have a teacher in the classroom who is looking in two directions at the same time. We're not determined to do that possibly yet. We are looking to solidify the numbers of students who would end up in those situations. But that is one thing that we are carefully looking at. It has kind of taken, it's still at the top of the list of priorities, but the recent spike in percentages and potential that we may have to shift toward a testing regimen or a fully remote situation for the district. It kind of slowed that down a little bit. But that is one of the options we were looking at, understanding the difficulty that teachers have looking in both directions.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay. Just looking to see if there's anybody else here.
Last call.
And just to throw out the things we've talked about as a district. This has been very hard for everybody. So I am really trying to attend to the needs of our students, our families, our teachers, our staff. This has been particularly challenging at all levels. But certainly, one of the things that the teachers have asked for repeatedly is time. I think that has been the number-one concern. So we are looking at, and it all depends on how this plays out in terms of the rates and what happens with schools in general. But looking to give them some time, even if it's a day per month, to adopt possibly the snow day schedule that we've put in place. It wouldn't be a snow day, but obviously, put them into that type of schedule so that they can meet with students who need additional help in more of an office-hours-type environment and catch up with themselves a little bit. Because this has been a particularly challenging situation. I'm going to say that at all levels, but certainly at the elementary level when the kids are in the same enclosed environment for the bulk of the day. So, and we have had those conversations as well. Okay.
All right, then, that ends our second public commentary. Do we have any closing remarks from board members?
Just, we can't say thank you enough. I mean, from the contact tracing to the seeking out testing to the making hybrid work and bringing the kids back, you know, everyone from Jim and his staff down to custodial security, everyone. Just thank you so much.
Thank you, Linda. And I extend that to everybody in this district. I have never asked somebody for help and had them say, what more can I do? Had them say anything about what more can I do?
Okay, then a motion to adjourn. That's Tom, and a second from Kelly. Thank you all, thank you all at home for tuning in. And we'll see you at the next meeting.
Mute all, I'm going to end the meeting. Turn your mics off. Thank you, folks.